Mr. Brennan.
President.
Mr. Rickaman.
Here.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval. Mr. Vine.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mayor Benjamin.
Here.
Thank you.
Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, city of Florida, states of America, to the public. Mayor McDowell, you give us the word, please.
Let us pray. Gracious and kind Father, for your benevolent love, for grace that covers each of us individually and collectively. In this season of this pandemic, as it reaps havoc in the lives these our citizens and nationally, we pray for those persons who succumbed. We pray for the 10,000 persons in South Carolina who have given their lives. We pray for our discerning spirit so that as we move forward, we not only capture and conquer this pandemic, not alone, but with your grace and with your mercy. Touch us individually and collectively, allowing us to sense your anointing presence. Lord, we need you. And we need you more now than we've ever, ever needed you before. Bless us all. Amen.
There's a motion to approve the agenda. There's one amendment to add the Nathaniel Abraham Senior Day proclamation presentation. A motion to adopt the agenda with that amendment.
Second.
Discussion. Move the previous question.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Yes, sir, Mayor Benjamin. At this time, we can certainly, and with, I guess, heavy hearts for many of us, but take up the Nathaniel Abraham Senior Day Proclamation Presentation.
Okay. Yeah. My motion. So move.
Second.
Discussion. Move the previous question. Quick call roll.
Mayor, this is a proclamation.
Well, I apologize. I thought we had the agenda. Maybe a couple of minutes.
No, sir.
You skipped over. I was, I was, I was, I was playing with Mr. Rickaman. I apologize. So I'd like to read this proclamation on behalf of the people of Columbia. Whereas Nathaniel Abraham Senior first came to Columbia, South Carolina to improve African-American conditions in the early 1960s. And whereas Nathaniel Abraham Senior was summoned by civil rights leader Jessica Simpkins to sell newspaper advertisements and eventually published a ComEd leader. And whereas Nathaniel Abraham Senior became an instrumental voice that championed many civil rights issues that helped shape South Carolina's history. And whereas Nathaniel Abraham Senior affectionately called the dean of black publishers in South Carolina, founded Southern Views Magazine, ComEd Times of Greenville, ComEd Post of Columbia, Tri-County Sentinel, Carolina Panorama, and Progressive American Magazine, forcing a need to represent and reach out to underprivileged communities. And whereas Nathaniel Abraham Senior worked with the Richland County Citizens Committee to protect local and nearby residents' rights. And whereas Nathaniel Abraham Senior was bestowed a proclamation from Mayor Robert D. Coble, signed by E.W. Cromartie II, District Council member, on May 13, 2005, declaring that day Nathaniel Abraham Senior Day, which presented the key to the city of Columbia at the roast and toast honoring Nathaniel Abraham Senior. Whereas Nathaniel Abraham Senior continued to use the voice of print media to complete and disseminate information to inspire African-Americans economically, educationally, and politically, until his retiring as publisher emeritus of Carolina Panorama Newspaper. And whereas Nathaniel Abraham Senior, as part of his final contribution to community work, created the Legacy of Black Business Awards Gala in 2013, acknowledging African-American-owned businesses in operation more than 40 years. Now, therefore, I, Stephen K. Benjamin, mayor of the city of Columbia, along with my fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim August 17, 2021, as a day of celebration and recognition Nathaniel Abraham Senior Day.
Obviously, this is a little bit hard. But of course, we want to say, I'm sorry, I am Tanita Abraham, the youngest daughter of Nathaniel Abraham Senior. He lived his latter years with me in Fort Mill, South Carolina. So of course, we've traveled, myself and my son, to accept this. We greatly appreciate it. And of course, just a couple of words of thankful. I just want to say, we can't begin to say that we can speak as eloquently as my father or even partially fill the shoes. And we acknowledge that. But I do know that in everything that he fought for and everything that he stood for, right now, he's smiling and he is pleased. And so are we. So, but we are saddened by our loss and the loss of the community. We know, and you know, that it is a life well-lived and a job well-done. So we thanks again, thank you again, to each of you for recognizing all that he attempted to do to assist his fellow man. And please know that although we're saddened, we will definitely do our very best to continue and to build on his legacy.
I know everyone here has stories of Mr. Abraham. Ever-present, always leading, always serious about his business, covering the people's work and the people's business. And he'll be sorely missed. And I can only imagine the treasure trove of memories that helped shape the city over the last half-century that you might have in your archives. And you guys spent some time talking about that, that too. So I'm going to present this.
I was so anxious to acknowledge Mr. Abraham, Mayor, but yes, sir, we do need to approve the minutes.
I'm not going to do it now.
The 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes.
Is that a motion?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Move the previous question. Quick call roll.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Thank you.
And another presentation of the Benjamin and Council, the Columbia-Richland Fire Department Appreciation Day Proclamation, the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
I'm waiting for the timing. Usually when you do that, a private truck comes racing by, heading to an emergency perfectly timed by Chief Jenkins. He missed his, he missed his cue. He missed his cue. The. This is actually pretty good.
Even has that down.
Actually, pretty good.
He's been practicing.
Yeah. Actually, pretty good. Pretty good. Oh, man, I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Columbia, South Carolina, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Colombians. Whereas the Columbia-Richland Fire Department has recruited 620 Korean volunteer fire members, committed to checking the public from the dangers of fire and fire-related injuries. And whereas the department's fire prevention division has worked tirelessly to promote education and fire safety in our communities. And whereas the fire department turned to virtual means of engaging with citizens on fire prevention or safety during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Columbia-Richland Fire Department was conducted more than 2011 fire inspections, 106 virtual home fire safety surveys, and 21 virtual fire education presentations over the course of 2020. And whereas these activities are more and more earned the department the recognition of fire-safe South Carolina community for the second year in a row. And whereas that designation came from Fire Safe South Carolina, which promotes risk reduction programs in fire departments to prevent fire-related injuries in our state. And whereas the Columbia-Richland Fire Department was asked, presented a national conference on the best ways to virtually promote fire safety and education with the public, and for our Stephen K. Benjamin, mayor of the city of Columbia, along with my fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim August 17, 2021, Columbia-Richland Fire Department Appreciation Day in the great city of Columbia, and urge our fellow citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. We know that this one sheet of paper, we couldn't begin to encapsulate all the work that you and the men and women of Columbia-Richland Fire Department do time and time again. We lean on you, even in some very non-traditional responsibilities. And time and time again, you stepped up and just made it happen. So this is a brief opportunity to say how much we appreciate you and thank you for your service, Chief.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, Council, Madam City Manager. I had this long speech to say, but since you read a proclamation, we said it all. So we just want to say, thank you all for this recognition. And certainly, we're going to continue to go hard to make sure that we continue to keep not only the citizens here safe, but those that passed through here and visited us as well. So we just want to say, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Just something like that.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we will have an update from the Capital City Lake Murray Country Regional Tourism Board. Ms. Miriam Atria, the president and CEO of Capital City Lake Murray Country Regional Tourism Board.
Say that real fast, five times. I left my sound effects at home, but I brought a large voice today. On behalf of Capital City Lake Murray Country, Mayor Benjamin and members of council and city manager, thank you for this opportunity. We just had our annual meeting. And our annual meeting is where we get together with our funding partners, tourism allies, tourism advocates, to unveil what we've kind of done in the past year and what's expected in coming year. And so we brought you some real updates today on how our regional tourism organization has been marketing the four-county region in the last year. In the last four months of our fiscal year, thanks to our special events director, Vicky Davis, who is with us today, we hosted five major national tournament events in four months. All of these events brought national TV exposure, which included our tourism ad to this region. Vicky and I also have just returned from ICAST, which is the largest fishing and outdoor show in the United States. You know that in this tourism region, 1.5, it is a $1.5 billion industry for the four counties that our organization promotes. But the good news about ICAST, we are returning with some great business for the year 2022, 2023, and even into 2024. And it's all not necessarily fishing. We are hosting in September the National Women's Sail Sunfish Regatta out on Lake Murray, and they will be coming from all across the United States. Some of the business we are bringing will also support rentals at Columbia Convention Center. During the pandemic, Capital City Lake Murray Country committed 54% of our budget on direct marketing and advertising. And on the way, we are on the way to the World Food Championship. Seven chefs from this region were chosen. John Cooper, a resident of the city of Columbia, who is the master chef, Valadeas, will join the six other chefs. This region is going to receive unprecedented media coverage from the World Food Championship on the Food Network television show, along with our tourism ad. Our region will be competing. Those seven chefs will join, there's 350 chefs, and they will be competing for a seat of 10 contestants at the final table event, where one of those chefs will win $100,000. The results are in. Our region's message is being shared through our media press partners to provide us with the annual report as well. Last year, last fiscal year, 162 articles were published on this region's various tourism facilities, itineraries, attractions, et cetera. 18 billion media impressions were made from the 162 articles. And they also confirmed to us that is a 168 million marketing value for this region. We spent $681,000. Pretty smart marketing. We have a regional show getting ready to air that was filmed right before the pandemic dropped. And it's called Beyond Your Backyard with Eric the Travel Guy. Many Columbia and regional attractions are featured in this 30-minute television show, which will be airing in the fall on PBS. I believe it's 142 markets across the United States carry PBS in Beyond Your Backyard. And as well, Eric the Travel Guy, we kind of cloaked him, talked him into producing a one-hour show. We joined with our South Carolina Tourism Region Partners to produce a one-hour show on the Revolutionary War Trail Journey through South Carolina. That show has been completed in the production and will be airing as well, January 2022. Hot off the press, Forbes magazine named our region a top southern destination. And more real news, last week, Vicky is showing, Food and Travel magazine named us as a top food and travel destination. So hopefully, you get a glimpse. We're bringing in the fishing folks. We're bringing in outdoor recreation. We're putting this region on national television through so many televised shows. So we're spreading the message that we are the region in South Carolina to come to visit, to come spend the night, and to come and spend your money. But we couldn't do it without our partnership with the city of Columbia. And for that, we'll be ever grateful. I'd like to close by asking Councilmember Sam Davis to join me at the podium. If you may. Will, please? Sam's her has served on our board, along with Councilmember Howard Duval. Sam has served on our Board of Directors for 20 years. And we kind of heard through the grapevine, he's thinking about maybe retiring. And so we did not want you to leave us without some small memento and recognition for the wonderful partnership for helping us with our tourism efforts for over 20 years. You have been an asset to our organization as well. And just wanted to give you a big hug today and a small token of appreciation. Again, thank you.
Is it true that Sam Davis caught the largest fish in Lake Murray?
That is a fact. And in our annual report, that is not a made-up fishing story. That is a true fishing fact.
True, a true fishing fact.
Thank you. Mine are about that big.
That's a, oxymoron. The, Mayor, no, thank you. I mean, your, your presentations always capture all the great substance of the work that you, that you've been doing. And you're right, the exponential value to the quality of life in the Midlands has been amazing. So yeah, I guess somebody else to guard the door. I guess Howard has to do it now, because this guy here, he would, Sam would make sure no one ever messed with your budget. I'm sure Howard would do just as, just as great a job. So thank you. Thank you, thank you, you and your team.
Mayor Benjamin, if you are ready, we can move into a period of city council discussion and action.
Just go ahead. I'm in for?
I guess.
Let's go ahead. Director Tinsley.
Okay, sure. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Harry Tinsley, Emergency Management Director, to come board for a COVID-19 situational report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam City Manager. I'll be brief, just a quick data upset, update on the COVID-19. So as of, according to CDC, seven-day moving average for daily COVID-19 cases increased 18.4% from the previous week. Previous week was about a little over 96,000 and with 114,000 for that report cycle. Of noting of the four classified variants of concern, the combined portion of those cases attributed to Delta is estimated to increase from 83.4% to 97.4% as we start to move through this, this next wave or this wave we're in now. As of August 15th, 44 states, previously 38, are now classified as regard to high community transmission. South Carolina is included in that. At our last meeting, we were substantial. Six states, previously 12, are now classified as substantial. Zero states are classified as low. The top six states with the highest cases is Louisiana, Florida, Mississippi, Arkansas, Alabama, and South Carolina. We currently rank number six in the nation. And you'll notice also that all 46 counties in our state now have high disease activity. At our last reporting, we had a few that were, that were medium. So now everybody at the last reporting is at high. According to DEHAC data running from July 1 to 31st, and I think I put this in a brief snapshot, sit rep I sent out earlier this week, of the 26,848 cases reported where DEHAC could determine vaccine status, 88% of those were considered not fully vaccinated. That's of those 26,848. The 550 hospitalizations reported, 77% of those were considered not fully vaccinated. And then of the deaths reported during that, that month of July, 110 of those, 79% of those, or 87 of the 110, were considered not fully vaccinated. Some international data, as of August 14th, Japan and Mexico are seeing their slope increase. United Kingdom is plateauing. Their peak took about two months to get there. South Africa is decreasing. Their peak took about a month in their wave. India is fully plateauing, and it took about two months to their, to their peak. So we started seeing ours in July. So we're, we're kind of in the middle of ours in our state, and that mirrors in Richland County and the city of Columbia, as the data shows. Of note, vaccine clinics are still, it's your shot, Columbia Campaign. We do have two more vaccine locations next week, the 24th of August, which is at Norwood Park, and the 25th of August, which is at Woodland Park. And those will be from one to five clinics. DEHAC is our sponsor on that. They've been awesome partners with us as, as Lexington Medical Center and PRISM help. We're continuing to work on scheduling additionally as we, as we continue to move through. And all that information is on our website, current. So the EPI data that posted today, state's case count is, now stands confirmed case count at 545,625. There have been almost 9,000 tests to date. The new case count confirmed as of today was 1,019, 1,991. That's down slightly. There were 286 probable for a total of 2,277 combined cases. Percent positivity rate was at 13%. And that test sample was about 28,000, a little over 28,000 tests. Unfortunately, there were six new confirmed deaths, one probable bringing our state confirmed a total of 8,918. Here in Richland County, where our case count stands at 44,307, we had an additional 129 cases as of 40 today, 23 probable. Over the last 14 days, we're averaging about 179 cases per day in Richland County. And that's, I think, our last meeting, it may have been 79. So we're definitely seeing, seeing that spike continue. As far as statewide hospitalizations, bed utilization rate is at 79%. ICU bed utilization is at 79% as well. The number that came out today was there are 1,718 patients currently hospitalized to confirmed or suspected COVID-19 due to confirmed or suspected. You'll notice two weeks ago, when we met, the number was 729. So we're continuing to go up with the hospitalizations. In Richland County, our hospital bed utilization is 68.9. There are 129 patients hospitalized COVID. That's up from 62 from my last. I don't have the Lexington numbers, but I know they were reaching some high rates as of the weekend, last week. And then I think you're, they're starting to address that issue. As far as DEHAC reports, there have been 4.3 million doses of COVID-19 administered in our state. 57.7% or 200, a little over 203,000 residents in Richland County have received at least one dose. 48.8% of those have completed their vaccination process. And according to the latest data, as of the 16th of August, COVID-19 vaccinations, there's 168.6 million US citizens or 59.8% that are fully vaccinated. And 80.8, 80.8% of those, 65 and older, have been fully vaccinated. And 72.1% of those who are above age of 18 have received at least one dose in the US. Any questions? That concludes my report.
That was a lot. Harry, Mr. Vine.
Harry, out of those, sorry, of those hospitalization numbers, do we have the children's hospital numbers?
I do not have that. They report by county total. I will have to reach out to their DM and emergency manager to get that.
Can we start including that in our report? Just so we can track. School starts tomorrow, and we'd like to see. I know the schools are doing everything that they can do. We've done what we can do. But it'd be nice for us to be able to monitor that. Thank you.
This. Harry, if you would, give me the, maybe I didn't hear it, the new case numbers.
For today?
Yes.
The case number for today in, in our state was 1,991 confirmed. The case number for today in our state was 1,991 confirmed, 286 probable for a total of 2,277. And in Richland County, that number was 129 cases, 23 of those probable with 152 combined.
Just, I agree, it'd be great to see those numbers by children's hospital numbers on a regular basis. I do know that just overnight statewide, Prisma saw a 10% increase in admissions this day to day. The Lexington numbers referenced earlier, Lexington has highest number of admissions, COVID admissions, since the beginning of the pandemic this past weekend, and we're seeing a trend there that is, again, incredibly concerning. One consistent thing we see is that the likelihood of someone surviving goes up dramatically if, in fact, they receive vaccine. So we want to encourage as many people within the sound of our voice to take one of the vaccines that's been authorized for emergency use. It can indeed help save your life as the data indicates, as Director Tinsley indicated as well, the, pretty much almost every case now, and soon to be every case, we're seeing is a Delta variant case. If you haven't started reading much about Lambda and Epsilon, then you should. The Epsilon variant shows significant vaccine resistance, and if we don't do everything we can to get as many of us vaccinated as quickly as we can, then it seems like this may be a never-ending journey. There are ways to stop it, obviously. Get vaccinated when you're in close quarters as we are now, mask up, let's do all the common sense things we've been talking about from the very beginning. And if we do, indeed, we can save lives, improve public health, we'll improve the education of children, and we'll also save our businesses, many of whom are struggling right now under the weight of the pandemic. We can do more, and I want to thank, again, thank this council for leading, because we've led, a lot of others have been inspired to do so as well in their own right. We're seeing good, strong support statewide, bipartisan support, and not that this is a partisan issue, but strong bipartisan support as well to protecting our children and our educators as they go back into the schoolhouse this week. So let's stay the course. Let's stay the course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Tinsley.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. At this time, we are bringing back the Chief Officer Proposal by the Honorable Edward H. McDowell.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and members of the council, thank you for, again, I want me to share with you a passionate plea for this chief medical, I'm sorry, health officer Harry, you made whatever I wanted to say today, you've done that. You've said simply, you've given us enough information to simply say, we need to do this. As you know, there are 10,000 deaths in South Carolina related to COVID. Children are continuing to be diagnosed with COVID. There's the pandemic of diabetes that we have not talked about. There's the pandemic of cancer, the pandemic of HIV, the pandemic of obesity, sickle cell, continuing to ravish the lives of people. We hear the Delta, the Delta variant, the Epsilon variant, and of course, the Lambda variant. I hope we don't get to the point where we execute or have to execute a name for every one of the Greek alphabet. It is time for us to move forward. And in so moving forward, if our city is going to be a health haven, we cannot continue to negate the fact that 29203, 29229, and one other zip-coded area particularly, 29203, resonates with the highest number of amputees and the highest number of hard issues. How do we get at the, how do we get at the crux of this matter? What do we do? Do we just sit silently by and not do anything? Or do we, do we allow persons with expertise to step forward and to help persons in those areas? Of course, there are several other things that we could do as a city. But if we are going to beat this Delta variant, if we are going to move in a direction where folk are being resourcefully helped, we need to do something, we need to act today. Cannot continue to sit and not do anything. Persons are dying. That's a reality. That's not fictional at all. Persons are dying. What do we do? Do we sit back and just perhaps think that it will all go away? Harry was very eloquent today. The numbers are glaring, and it's not lowering at all. We could very well involve ourselves as a council on other opportunities, but right now, it's a health opportunity. Whether you live or die, whether resources are available and a resource person is available. It saddens me when I talk to a family who just admitted a child to ICU. It saddens me. I have children, you have children, and I must admit to you with all the passion that is within me, I'm scared. So I made my way to DHEC this morning, early this morning, to get tested again. I've been, I've had my shots. But supposing there are persons in your community that have no earthly idea, who do you call? Who do you call? Who are you able to touch bases with? Who are you able to converse with in not a medical, I guess a medical way? What their particular malady is and what is needed for healing? This is not, and I want to say this quite poignantly, this is not political at all. This is about saving our city. There are other municipalities in these United States that have health offices. You have Atlanta, Baltimore, Miami, all of the other cities, other cities, of course, that have these persons in place. We've never had this conversation in chamber, we've never had this conversation around this table. Is it going to be time for us to step up and make health a priority? And if we don't make it a priority, we're going to find ourselves in a quagmire. Folk are going to continue to die, be diagnosed. Our children are at risk. They are at risk. What are we going to do? It's beyond me at this point to say anything more than to say, Harry, you took my thunder today, because all of what you said today is factual, inclusive, and we ought to be able to do something. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to propose, if you'd allow me, is that we transfer this to the Administrative Committee, continued conversation. I've had a preliminary chat, talk with members of our staff. I'd like to transfer this to the Administrative Committee, and within the parameter of two to three weeks, that we bring with additional materials to be added in that conversation. Back to the council for a vote.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Duval?
Is your mic on here, Howard? Is your mic on? Okay, excuse me, it's not on what it was. I'd like to take exception to Councilman McDowell's request. He says this is not a political question, but we all know that it is a political question. One of his, one of the candidates in this mayor's race has run on this, and I received an email called Irresponsible and Dangerous yesterday, where he criticizes one of our colleagues for objecting to it. And I'm not sure if I object to the position of a health officer as much as I object to it being interjected into the city council debates before the people vote in November. I have told many people in the last couple of years that I think that the group of people we have representing the city of Columbia at the present time and our staff is some of the best, is one of the best councils I've ever sat on. Is representative of lots of diverse opinions. We debate, we come to decisions, and we move on. And our staff has been wonderful, too. But the position of chief health officer has been promoted by a candidate that's running for mayor. It is being debated in the many forums that are coming to the city of Columbia about the mayor's election. And I think we should at least wait until the new council is sworn in in January to see if this has public support and political support on the seven-member council. We're going to have at least three new members of this council coming up in January, maybe four. And I think that we need to hold this debate, I don't mind referring it to the Administrative Committee, but I don't think our staff should spend a lot of time doing research. I can tell Councilman McDowell that if he researches South Carolina, he will not find a city in South Carolina with a chief medical officer, because that is a county responsibility. We have county health offices, we have Department of Health and Environmental Control, we have Chief Tinsley and his staff that work with us, and I'm not sure what more we could do in the COVID fight with the chief medical officer than we are doing presently with our staff and the hard work that the staff and Councilman McDowell and his committee got 2,000 people vaccinated. That's what we need to be doing, is getting people vaccinated, not debating whether or not we need another position in the city government. So I would respectfully ask that this be held until we have the election, let it be voted on by the people, let the candidates, two of which are on this panel right now, this council right now, debate it in public and see who the public elects and when they get in sworn in in January. Then we can have a fresh look at it based on public sentiment expressed in the next election.
Thank you, Mr. Duval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. McDowell.
Mr. Duval, I disagree with your political stance on that. I think that is totally incorrect. You raised the issue about this being a political stance for me, it's a health stance for me and several thousands of other folk. You raised the issue about this being political and having to wait until election. Folk are dying, Howard. Do you know that? Folk are dying. They aren't wait, they've got to wait until someone is elected, whomever that person is. You've made political statements around this table referencing two months ago. So let's not make this political. You've made it political by wanting to push this off, not make it doable. Folk are dying, man. And if you don't recognize that, there are persons, other folk around this table that are, have recognized that it's not only COVID-19, but it's also diabetes, it's also cancer. So I totally, totally disagree with that, that we've got to wait until November 5th, November 2nd, for something to happen. You also support the candidate of your choice, right or wrong? Yes, sir. You support, and several other folk around on this DA support their candidate, that's your choice. But it's not a choice for me to just sit idly by because one person decides or brings up the whole notion of a chief medical officer. Again, folk are dying, and if you wait until November 2nd, folk are going to continue to die. And Harry is going to see those numbers escalate.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell.
Yes, sir.
Did you, Mr. Rickman and Ms. Devine?
Well, since nobody on this council is coming out from me, I'm going to go ahead and speak. I think that's a fair statement. Mr. McDowell, I appreciate you bringing forth some of the issues, they are priorities that need to be addressed. But one of the things I've discovered is, since this discussion has come forth, is that we haven't reached out to the agencies here and engaged the folks who can do things today. And I think that's our first step, and I think if this goes to committee, you need to make sure those folks are at the table, because between DHEC, the School of Medicine, the medical school, public health, and the 1,700 providers who provide home health that's covered through various, between insurance, Medicare, and Medicaid, there is opportunities to make sure that we get the help that folks need, the advice that they need, the services they need, it can be telemedicine, it can be home visits. It's amazing to me, as I dug into the issue a little deeper, to see how many opportunities we have out there for folks to get the help and to tackle these. And I think bringing it forth like you have is a great step forward in making the acknowledgement that we have some disparities and concerns in districts in our city. But I'm not sure that I agree that the health officer is going to make that happen faster or quicker than the agencies that have been doing it. We need to make sure that people are taking advantage of what's out there and understanding that. And every one of these agencies has phone banks, they have people who visit homes. I think we should reach out to all these agencies, including Blue Cross Blue Shield that provides services and money through their health foundation to help bring forth this and make that part of city council and the city moving forward going, hey, we really need this address, we know we have the agencies out here to do it, let's bring them to the table and start the discussion now, because you're right, it needs to be addressed, but it doesn't need to be the city, it needs to be the people who specialize and have the resources and the depth to make the difference. So I would ask that you bring those people to the committee and ask them to be engaged, because everybody from the American Society for Diabetes, to the School of Public Health, to the Medical School, to DHEC, to Blue Cross Blue Shield, Prisma Health, MUSC Health, all of these agencies are right here in our doorstep, along with people like SC Calls. along with people like SC Calls, who, you know, is invested in our community. They're building other things in our community. As one of the office buildings proposed for, for Phillips Street next to the stone manufacturing was a 24-hour daycare, 24-hour PES. Bring them to the table and let's help solve it.
All right, Ms. Devine.
Thank you. I guess let's take a step back a little bit. You know, I, I do believe that the way that this came forward probably was not, well, not probably, was not our normal process. And so certainly, whether it's political or not, the, the perception is that it is when you have a press conference out in front of City Hall and announce something before it is brought to the city manager for consideration. However, after that happened, we, it was asked, Mr. McDowell asked the city manager and staff to look at it. And I thought that's what we were actually going to hear from them today, is what they have looked into. And then I think that we all should be able to also give them some additional information regarding, you know, other things. There's been discussions, and Mr. Rickman rightfully said, there are a lot of agencies who are out there doing things. This resolution that was prepared talks a lot about statistics in 29203 specifically. And I know this predates Mr. McDowell, so he may not be aware of this. But in 2014, Prisma Health came here to this council at my request to make a presentation on the work that they are doing to address health disparities. And they told us then that there was a community health council specifically for 29203. I wanted to verify that that is still happening. So I texted them, and that is still happening. It is actually revamped into Rise Up Richland. And they have DHEC, they have the school districts, they have mental health providers, all of them at the table in this Rise Up Richland. And so I would ask if our staff has not reached out and talked to them about what they're doing, what are, are they doing, and that be part of the report. I have no disagree, I have no objection to it going to a committee. That's the way we do think the committee evaluated and look at it. But I think that we have to actually look at the data and figure out who is doing what. I don't know if there's anything additional that we have the ability or authority to do as it relates to COVID-19 at this point. But if there is, I think that each of us individually and collectively have been out there advocating for more information, more access. So if there's something specific, Councilman McDowell, because... And then the other thing I'd like to hear from the city manager is he's talking about the timeliness of this, that this is a budgetary requirement. Would, would that be somebody that's hired immediately as Councilman McDowell is discussing? So I, I would like to hear from staff on what information they have already pulled together, what additional information do they feel needs to be put together? And then before it gets to the committee, let us have an opportunity to provide additional information based on the research that we know. Some of us are very active in the healthcare field in this community, and we know who is doing what. And I think all those players need to be at the table. If we want to address something, it doesn't always have to be the city saying we're doing it. It is working together with our partners to actually make sure we're impacting our community. So I, I would like us to take that approach. And Ms. McDowell, if you would consider that, also bringing forward other people who need to be part of this discussion. But Ms., Ms. Wilson, I'd like to hear, have you guys, I think last week you, or last meeting, you mentioned y'all had done some work. Where's that information?
I, I can speak to it, or Reverend McDowell can. But yes, we presented the information to Reverend McDowell that we put together so far, so.
I would like you to present it to us.
Okay. Well, I think...
I think the plan was to present it to the committee.
Yeah. Exactly. So I can present it now briefly. I don't necessarily think this is probably the format to go into any depth about it, but I can certainly tell you the initial information. I think the goal, after we met this evening, we presented it to him first, being that it was his request, as I would do with any of you when you make an initial request to me. He came up with wanting to come here today and talk to you all about moving it forward in a committee process. And I can tell you just about everything you've said, particularly Mr. Rickman and Ms. Devine's research, which shows thus far that it is and should be a collaborative effort with the different agencies that we have at our disposal here in the Midlands. We certainly did do a pretty thorough review of what a chief health officer, which is very different from a chief medical officer. So I've heard that term being interspersed together. This is not someone who is a doctor, necessarily medical doctor in a hospital system. This is someone who is very much so knowledgeable about health disparities, public health, et cetera, as you described. When those particular, I guess, municipalities or cities in our country have those type positions in place, they're typically the cities where the health department itself reports up in that chain of government, which is not the way we're structured in Columbia. However, we do have DHEC, and we do have wonderful hospital systems. And, you know, medical school and university that has a public health department that we can certainly, as we talked to Reverend McDowell about, bring all of those different entities together, potentially as some type of committee of the city to work with you all and focus and drill down in the particular zip codes where you're seeing underserved communities and health disparities in particular. But that is what we left the conversation with. And I think Reverend McDowell was hoping from our discussion, and I'm not going to take credit for it, because Ms. Benjamin and Ms. Ashley Jenkins Wood, who's the program manager in my office, have done thorough researches. Many of you know Ashley is working on her master's in public administration, and she was able to even work with some of her colleagues, young colleagues, I will add, were already working in these fields with public health to bring a lot of good research. So we have it. We have some great recommendations. We have two options. But again, to your point, Ms. Devine, I mean, we're just doing the research and happy to do it. The council would ultimately need to give through the committee process and the ability to see some of these recommendations, what you feel would be the best direction to go. And no, it would not be this budget year. From my perspective, it would be going through the product, what you want to do. And if it is, if, even if it was a position, it certainly wouldn't be during this current budget cycle we're in, because no, we haven't budgeted for anything like that. But at the end of the day, I think the research would show that there is a way to probably address what all of you are saying, but in a very collaborative way with other entities in the Midlands.
Ms., Ms., what? Ms. Devine finished, and Mr. McDowell wrap up. And I'm going to make some final comments, and we're going, we're going to move on.
Thank you. I would just, again, suggest Rise Up Richland is, is someone who is currently working specifically in 29203. If that's not part of your research, I would suggest that you reach out to them, as well as I know that Jocelyn Brandon, Walters Brandon at DHEC, is working specifically with environmental justice as a, to help with disparities within our community. And they are, actually have a grant and are doing a lot of work. So I, I just, I think that there, we need to cast a wide net to understand who is doing what. I do think, Mr. McDowell, that county, the city is uniquely positioned to be the leader and bring people together that might be working in silos and bring that together for the collective good of our constituency. But I would just suggest that before the committee starts discussing it, having this additional information might be just fruitful to understand who's doing what, and then also identify if there are any gaps. Thank you.
Mr. McDowell.
Thank Ms. Wilson. Look, it, it's obvious to me that this resolution has gone through the normal processes. Is that correct, Ms. Wilson?
Well, I think, yes, sir. It's, it's been the attention of your colleagues. I mean, you all certainly haven't taken it up for action.
We're talking, we're talking about variants now. Rise Up Richland. I, I commend the program. Folk are dying now. What's the solution right now? What's the solution right now? If what I'm proposing, I had a real good conversation with our chief of staff and with Ms. Jenkins. There are models out there that we could frame this work in. Daniel, I think you're absolutely right. One of the models, of course, comes out of Louisiana, where it's called Healthy Cities. And that model, of course, sort of looks... And I think we've got to be very, we, we've got to be very specific when we say a health officer and a medical because they are not one in the same.
So what do you, you've said medical, but this says health. What are you asking for?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, what I'm asking for is for help, for folk in our city discounting what it's going to cost. Because if we got to put a cost on the lives of people, then we are in a quagmire. My, my particular position is simply this, Daniel. And I think you're absolutely right. One of the ways that we can do what you suggested a few minutes ago, bringing folk together, the committee meets, we look at the framework, framing this board or whatever into something that will speak to the need people who have expertise in those particular areas that I casually mentioned this morning. I think for us not to do anything right now is a travesty. It's a travesty. Whether you call it a medical officer, whether you call it a medical officer or a health officer, the point is folk are dying. And we are discussing the deaths of people. That is tragic. And for anybody to talk other than what we are talking about today is talking nonsense. Talking nonsense. We cannot rationalize death. Either you live or you die. And folk are dying. How do you rationalize that? And say it in such a way that we can't, we want to do something. We kind of act today. We got to act. Yeah, I'm going to refer, I'm going, I'm going to move that we refer this, Mr. Mayor. Simple as that. I'm through.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah. Silly season, as we call it. I don't have a problem having the, the city play a major role, if not the key role, the point role in taking care of or making sure that the health of our citizens is top-notch, number one. Number two, Daniel's right. We have a number of partners, agencies that are specifically assigned certain areas of, of health management and healthcare. 29203, I'm proud to say that I made a conscious decision to move with my family into 29203. But if we're getting true benefits from all of these partners and agencies that we have that are on the payroll, then why in the hell are the numbers so high in 29203, 29222? There's got to be a reason. Somebody's not hitting the target. Pure and simple. And there's nothing wrong with having a professional that guides this city down the path of being a truly, a true healthy city, number one. And make sure that the people who work for this council and the people who serve this city are in the best of health. So as far as I'm concerned, I, I think the committee process is, is fine. It's okay. I don't have a problem with that. Also, I'm not approaching this from a political standpoint, but the, I, the idea and the concept sounds very good. Sounds good to me. Because somebody's missing the boat in this city if these health disparities are just, are this high. With all these partners we have, the hospitals, the volunteer groups, you go on and on. So there may be a justification for not going down that path. I don't see it. And so Brother McDowell, I, I, I agree with you. I appreciate your stance on this.
I was not preparing to speak on this item. And I think in, in terms of ripeness, the issue will be before us in the motions portion of, of the agenda to refer this to Administrative Committee for discussion as a subcommittee of council and for a recommendation, in which Mr. McDowell has indicated that he will bring back a recommendation after full consultation with so many of the different organizations represented here to, to, to this council for final action. There's a lot said, and a lot of it that been completely unrelated to the, the issue before us, but some of it that, that seems to be presented as mutually exclusive options that are not mutually exclusive options. A couple of things, I just want to make sure it's clear. The two paths we have before us on, on this specific item, under our state statute, the city manager has the authority to establish departments and, and staff positions. This council can decide that they will vote on the spirit of, of this and direct the city manager to move forward with the council's will as a chief health officer. There's also, obviously, the authority under state law for a city to establish its own health commission. That, that is our authority under state law. Save some folks some research time. It's, I think it's state code section 44310. If, in fact, that were the option. I, I just want to make a couple of thoughts that I think is, are important to make. And, and then we'll take this back up at the time that's appropriate. We've never hesitated to be the tip of the spear. The fact that, that there's no position like this in South Carolina doesn't matter. There, there have been a number of laws that have been ripe for need in South Carolina. And the city of Columbia has never hesitated to be the tip of the spear to set the, set the stage. We've seen that just in the past two weeks alone. We should never hesitate when it's right, when it's in the interest of the life, health, and safety of our citizens to act. Because there's no one else doesn't mean we can't do it. We obviously have the authority under state law to maintain a, a board of health that will have operational responsibilities that would feed up into DHEC. Maybe in the age in which we're living, it's time for that. It's time for that as we work through some of the challenges, the chronic illnesses that are faced across the city, not just in, in 29203, but certainly as we work our way through this pandemic. We have been, as a society, not as a city or state, fairly reactive as it relates to the pandemic. And the opportunity to be more proactive, it's not a bad idea. I think the, we're talking about, if you want legal expertise, you hire a chief legal officer. You want a law enforcement expertise, you hire a, a, a doggone good chief of police or even project management expertise. We hire good people for that, too. So I think that's, that's all up for discussion. But those are our two paths. At some point, after discussion by the committee, that comes to the city manager with the support of a majority of council. Or if there's an alternate path of some type of a, a, a commission department, then that's our option. I, I will say this, and I'm, I'm going to wrap up my comments. And then we're, unless there's more to be said, I think we, if we go to the motions section at the end of the agenda, and we'll take this back up, then, when it is, again, when it is ripe. I remember sitting in city council chambers. It's been several years now. And at one point there, at least, at least one, sometimes two of our colleagues, that if I said the sky was up, they'd say it was down. Uh, that if I said the sky was up, they'd say it was down. If I said it was, uh, blue, they'd say it was black. Uh, if I said it was left, they'd say it was right. Uh, and, and, uh, I am. Smart enough and honest enough to know that sometimes I was wrong and sometimes I was right. Uh, but I knew that whatever I said, they go in the other, uh, direction. And I remember, uh, one of our colleagues, uh, making a, a suggestion, um. Uh, he was convinced that I would be in the alternative. And I, he said, that's a good idea, but let's, I, I, I support it. And he was dumbfounded. Um, um, and I think it's important. For us that if we believe something is a good idea and something is important as this. Uh. Yes, although we're in a political environment, it's important that it's a good idea, then allow a good idea to advance if it has our support. If it's a bad idea, then we go to the process and we choose that, uh, otherwise. The, the, uh, the, uh, the opportunity to discuss it and have all the other, um, uh, parties here in the Midlands. Who are charged, uh, with these responsibilities to, to participate and have a, have a say, it's important. Uh, but it's our responsibility, our sworn responsibility to do everything we possibly can to, a budget amendment. We've done budget amendments before. Appropriating, uh, one full-time and equivalent employee position out of, of, of over twenty-two hundred. We can do that as well. We've done it, uh, so the, the, let's, let's do our very best. As this goes to committee and comes back before us, hopefully having significant amounts of, of, of input from all the different parties mentioned here. If a recommendation comes back from the committee, then we'll take it up, uh, in whatever form it, it is and, uh, and hopefully not have to debate this. Um, uh, uh, again, again, until that, until that very point. Uh, but those are the paths before us, the options, uh, for us, um, before us. And I'll, I'll, I'll leave it there unless there's more comment, we'll take it back up in motions for referral to committee. And, uh. And then we're good. All right. Um.
Some movement.
All right. Uh, thank you. Thank you. Let's, um, let's keep on moving.
I think he's saying it's not appropriate to move it.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going to do it on the motions, on the motions.
All right.
Yes, sir, on the motions. All right. Namaste, manager.
And another committee that has been proposed by. You all, the tax study ad hoc committee, the honorable Daniel Rickman.
Um, I, I wasn't expecting it to be under discussion because we've already taken action as a council. And we all had put together a, uh, subcommittee that was supposed to be put to, uh, take. Three different economists, one from all of us to choose to move forward. I just wanted to get it, to get us to go ahead and let that committee do their job. Because it is pertinent. Um. We need to have this discussion. Uh, we need that committee to get operating if we're going to be competitive. And the restructuring that's going on in the U.S. I had three institutional lenders and developers in town this week looking around our city. Um. And they all said the same thing to me. It's, we need to be having discussion about how to be competitive to get that outside investment to grow. As the restructuring's coming, it's coming to the Sun Belt. You know, we had great growth. Six percent in the Sun Belt, but they're projecting double digits and I want to make sure we don't get left behind. So we've got the beginning of the discussion. We've all picked the economists to do this. Let's let them move and do their job. That's the only reason I wanted to bring it up is let those three economists get together and structure into committee so that we can have community dialogue. And try to advance the ball that benefits this community.
What's that, is it not, is that not happening? What's, what's, what, what?
It's kind of stalled. I, and that's why I put it, I wanted to put it on the agenda to find out where we are.
Well, we got, we got the three economists, we've written the letter, uh, I wrote the letter on April the twenty-sixth. Mr. Rickman responded that he hadn't got it on May the twenty-fifth and I wrote that. On May the twenty-fifth and so he has read the letter now and if, if the will of the council is for us to go ahead and schedule that, I'll get to the clerk and we'll. Could you, the three economists to come in and make a first.
Uh, any other comments?
We, we'll take care of.
Okay. I'm not even sure who's Baileywood that's in. Who, who's that even rest with? I, I will let the record, uh, reflect that, um, we've had twelve years of no tax increases in the city of Columbia. Uh, uh, we reduced private taxes by eight mils. And, um, I know Mr. Um, Palin is watching us online. He'll probably text me as soon as I'm, I'm done talking. Uh, but ten of the last twelve years, uh, or so, we've got a budget surplus. CFOA Award of Excellence. Uh, uh, six, seven years running. Uh, increasing, uh, investment in, in, in public safety. Uh, significantly, um, by, by double digits, good twenty-first century. Um, uh, uh, safety, uh, fully restored our state's reserve fund, which was damaged during the pandemic. And we've done this all by, while walking and chewing gum at the same time. Um, uh, the, uh, if you haven't driven around Main Street, Lady Street, Bull Street, Assembly Street. And seeing the construction that's going on, uh, uh, in, in the city, uh, right now. We're moving forward and moving forward post haste. Uh, there's a lot of good stuff going on, uh, right now. We've done that while also investing. Uh, what's the magic number? How much have we done in, in infrastructure investment the last year? Seven hun- three quarters of a billion dollars in infrastructure, uh, in, in, investment, um, as, as well. So, um. We got, we got a story to tell. And when I tell that to institutional investors and I tell that to bankers and I tell that to. Folks from, uh, Wall Street to Main Street, they're, they're pretty doggone happy about it. Uh, so whoever, if it's Howard or, uh, Teresa, whoever's got to get this together, um, to tell us how we can do better, what we need to be doing. Um, but I, I'm interested in hearing the report, uh, as it relates to the county and school districts and state policy and everything else. That's a whole different discussion, but the city of Columbia has this act together. I want to make sure we know that. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Meet with the economists, please, somebody. All right.
Well, you know, since we're going to get political for a minute, uh.
Those, 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 those are just facts.
I just, I want to say that what, what a lot of us had to do. In two thousand and eight and seven to make decisions so that in two thousand and ten, there was a reserve account. And there was an opportunity to grow. I think, you know, we need to acknowledge what some of us on this council had to do. To make hard decisions and to get the city right. Uh, you know, this isn't about the city. This is about our community and the future growth. And yes, we've had growth, but we've had limited growth. We got communities outpacing us. All I want to do is make sure that we have the information so that this council. As the mayor said earlier. Can do what it does best, which is debate and try to move policies forward that will benefit us in the long run. Because we have opportunities and the world's changing and we need to be prepared. That's, I think that's the purpose of the committee and I just want to make sure that, that we understand that.
I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Rickman, um, with all due respect. However, it's important. You referenced oh eight, oh nine and ten. It's one of the reasons I chose to run for mayor. Uh, is because we couldn't close our books for two years. It's because we were furloughing police officers. It's because we were planning to shut down the Shand and Fire Station or the Fire. Uh, the decisions were made and we, and we wouldn't invest in, in infrastructure. That's seven hundred and fifty million dollars was as a result of a consent decree. That because we wouldn't make the investments that we needed to make. So i- it's, it's important that, that, that the decision to put us in the position where we are now. Uh, have, have been decidedly the decisions made over the last, uh, twelve years. Not, and I, and, and obviously I, I don't plan to engage in that debate over the next several months. I'll, I'll let the four of you. Have, have that, have that discussion, but every time it's raised. Um, uh. If I'm in the room where someone asks my opinion, I'm going to share my opinion. Uh, the, um, and, and obviously we all, we all know, we all have opinions, right? All right.
I have to move with the economists.
Okay, please, please, Ms. Uh, I'm sorry.
Move approval of the present agenda.
All right. Is your mic on? All right. Uh, was second, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, approval extended on items seven through twenty-seven. Any discussion? With the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Thank you. Mayor Benjamin and counsel for the ordinances, first reading, the first one being item twenty-eight. I would need a motion to amend the not exceeding amount to thirty-one million dollars. And then if you could allow me to read this item into the record.
Which item is that in? Um, twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Who's, who's going to read it in? You read it in?
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to amend and then I would read it in, Mr. Mayor.
Uh.
I, I didn't hear that.
You go ahead, go ahead, go ahead and read it in, read it in and, and then we'll amend, uh, uh, if it is such.
Read it in as it reads currently. Or, or you want me to address the?
I just didn't hear your, the figure.
Thirty-one million.
Thirty-one million. So I would move to amend ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-one oh six seven to not to exceed thirty-one million dollars.
Second. Discussion. Read into the record.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one zero six seven, this supplemental ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of the city of Columbia, South Carolina. Special Obligation Refunding Bond Hospitality Fee Pledge Series two thousand twenty-one in the aggregate footstool amount. Of not exceeding thirty-one million dollars in order to refund all or a portion of the city of Columbia, South Carolina. Special Obligation Bonds Hospitality Fee Pledge Series two thousand fourteen. Authorizing the mayor, the city manager, the assistant city manager for finance and economic services. Or any two of them acting together to determine certain matters that to the bond prescribing the form and details of such bond. And other matters relating there too.
Move.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, so do we need to vote on the amendment?
They move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? With the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just clarification, Mr. Mayor. My motion was to amend. We didn't vote on that, but then you read it in. So are we covered, Ms. Brennan, or do we need to vote on votes?
I've read it, Ms. Madam Devine. So I think you can now vote on the actual item after you took the vote on the amendment.
Okay, so that vote was proven and, and now we need to vote on the motion.
Move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion with previous questions for, for roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. Item twenty-nine, ordinance number two thousand twenty-one zero seven two, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement. Between the city of Columbia and Latitude Thirty-two Development LLC for the sale of twenty-two twenty-one Devine Street and Richmond.
Is there a motion?
Oh.
Okay, is there? Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion. With the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
For a zoning planning matter, item thirty, wanting text amendment to amend the text of unified development ordinance.
There a motion now? We've had a public hearing already, okay?
Seven days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, it says, we've had the public hearing. Chris's head is like. Um, any discussion? We'll move the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Item thirty, one, moving into a period of resolutions, resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero four seven. Approving assessment role for city center business improvement district.
Second? Moving second in discussion. Saying none, with the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Uh.
Item thirty-two, resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero nine zero, supporting We Love Five Points LLC's proposed concept. For development of the former Wells Fargo property.
This man.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brennan.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Saying none, move previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Thank you. Item thirty-three, resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero nine one, ratifying and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Columbia and the Silia Saxon Shopping Center. LLC for the employee health.
Second.
Discussion. Saying none, move the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Item thirty-four, resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero nine three, certifying five building sites as abandoned buildings pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act. Title twelve, chapter sixty-seven, section twelve sixty-seven, one hundred.
Is there a motion?
Go move.
This is second.
Second.
Is it discussion? Mr. Davis?
Question. Are we, um, indicating that there have been five buildings sold designated?
No, sir, there are.
Only this one?
These are an additional five.
Certified five building sites. What am I missing? Five sites.
Yes.
On, on, on the footprint of that property.
It is just one property, but the, the statute allows for there to be sites or buildings. On the proposed usage. So there is a diagram in there that shows the different five sites.
And we've done that, uh, in, in the past, um. Dallas Street and Bull Street and a few other places as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Um, any discussion, previous discussion, we'll move the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
The following, the next two resolutions or event resolutions and the safety plans, um, have been prepared and submitted to. The police department for review.
Before you go, Teresa, um, as president, I want to thank you all for being, being here and for moving forward with this. Uh, we're, we're very excited, uh, about it and look forward to seeing you next Monday. And then spend some time together, right? Thank you. All right. Good, be blessed.
Item thirty-five, resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero eight zero, authorizing consumption of beer and wine only within Boyd Plaza adjacent to the Columbia Museum of Art.
Is there a second?
Back.
In discussion. And then we'll move the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Item thirty-six, resolution number R two thousand twenty-one zero eight six, repealing and replacing R two thousand twenty-one zero three four. Authorizing consumption of beer and wine beverages only at the lifting as we climb fundraiser on Main Street on Saturday, September the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Is there a motion?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion. We'll move the previous question, court, call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Moving into a period of appointments, um, there are several appointments listed, um, many of which, if not all, we have brought, um, before you all previously. So I'm really encouraging, uh, appointments to be made. I think there are a few potentially. Uh, DDRC, for example, where oftentimes they may be running into a forum issue. Um, Ashley has done a good job of bringing the memos forward. So if there's something else that we need to do differently to help you all move these along, please let me know.
It needs to get to us quicker. We, we don't have time. When we get the, the nominations and all to review it and talk to the district representatives to see who, who they might have or who they might want to support. So we need to get the information.
Right.
Before, the Friday before.
Well, most of what you're getting the Friday before at this point are things you've gotten for weeks before.
Yeah, I think she's tried to email them. I, I think that, I think she's tried to email them with the backups and give us kind of the heads up. I think it really is incumbent upon us to go through that email when she brings it and then ask.
Yeah, I, I, I disagree. Yeah, I, I, I disagree that these are coming on the Friday before for the first time. I don't think that's accurate, but, um, if, again, what Ashley has suggested is she can meet with you all, if, if that would help you to go through them well in advance, but there's not any of these that haven't come before you before.
Yeah.
I don't see the election commission on here, and we got an election coming up out here, and, uh, we might, might need to get up all three members of the election commission appointed.
There's only, uh, one vacancy and it'll be on your next meeting agenda.
Next week.
Yeah. All right, so. So we're gonna, we're gonna walk through these and I, I, uh, Ashley does a pretty good job making sure I have the information and I think I'm on the same, uh, list as everybody else. I know we have a pretty, our challenge is, once we have the information, let's, let's be diligent, I mean, we've, we've done a, I think, a pretty good and fair job listening to one another as we speak geographic diversity across the city, sometimes maybe even, uh, uh, maybe a bit too deferential. Uh, uh, but when it comes time to act, we have to, we have to rid of that act, uh, and you have, we have some places, you know, obviously we could, we couldn't pull teeth and get people to serve on, on commit, committees and commissions and, and some we have a whole lot of people wanting to serve, so we gotta get and put them, uh, put them to work, so, uh, the quicker we get through some of these, then less we'll have to deal with. Um, so, um, actually, thank you for the juggling act, uh, uh, of what we have. If there's a way to get any additional information to us individually, uh, and request, let's do it. We're gonna tell these real quick?
Sure, so.
And let me, and let me ask one more question too. I, I forget the policy, and TK's in here too. As it relates to the existing board members, uh, that serve their terms, I'm thinking about Mr. Green and the Housing Authority specifically. Are we, are we able to reappoint i- if someone's rendering excellent service if we get the term we, we, we used? That's an option, um, uh.
If they've already used up the.
If, yeah, the, the, the terms, the terms, okay, I, I, I know we're, we're only taking up, um, we've been holding on the, uh, we've had other applicants in there as well. Um, and we have Mr. Cromarty, which I think is a.
Yeah, the Housing Authority is on here, I think specifically for the reappointment of Mr. Cromarty, um, Mr. Mayor. But I, I think that you all can make a decision to do that.
I just want to make sure we're not in conflict with any Housing Authority, with that, I think obviously it's our prerogative, the point, I, I was just thinking through that. And we got, and that's another good situation, we got a lot of good applicants, yes, that's not, so, um, all right, um.
Can we do the, uh, quality committee as a group? Because we don't have any numbers that we have to pick for that committee, let's just put them all on there and, um, work, work with the group, just volunteer.
Yeah, I would move approval of.
I do know that, um, I don't see him in here at this point, but I know that Mr. Rickaman had questions about number thirty-seven.
He asked me about that, we've, we've discussed it, um, and, um, he was thinking more equality and to diversity of African Americans, Hispanics, explaining to him the committee is specific, so. He's fine with that, he's fine with moving on it.
Okay, well, I, I am making sure that everybody.
I would certainly make sure.
Item is on the.
We're gonna, we're gonna wait for Mr. Rickman to come back in the room.
That was good.
All right, yeah, um, so let's go to Housing Authority real quick. So.
All right.
You, you, yes, that you wanna wait?
So, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure. What's up, what's up primarily for the C H A, of course, is Mr. Cromarty being reappointed.
Yes, sir.
And it's within our wherewithal to reappoint Mr. Green?
Yes.
Can we do that today too?
If you would like to.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
With exception of.
As long as Ms. Mountain doesn't say there's anything wrong with it.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, answer, yes.
It is fine, yes, sir, not a problem.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, we got, we got, we got Mr. Rickman back, we lost Mr. Devine, so, um, but, uh, Tamika's back in the room, she said, uh, let's rock and roll on Housing Authority. Um, we take up the, uh, Daniel, the, the question that came up is, uh, I think you had some questions, I think, you, Ms. Devine may have resolved them on, uh, advisory committee on equality.
I wasn't aware, so I didn't want you to miss.
Yeah.
The discussion.
So, oh, okay, our resolve, okay? Uh, I'm sure she wants to be in the room for the motion, so, so we'll, we'll wait, let's go to the Housing Authority, take up the appointment of, uh, uh, um, we can do them separately, uh, the appointment of, uh, reappointment of Ernest Cromarty.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, move the previous question, Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Yep.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine? Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi. I, I know that Mr. Green has been the residential, uh, commissioner since, uh, uh, March of, of sixteen. I know policies allow for the reappointment of some, yeah, the term, uh, uh, for exceptional service, and I think it's clear, Mr. Green's been a, a fantastic commissioner. Um, I'd support his reappointment for, for one last term is that Housing Authority executes on these various projects, major projects, half a billion dollar worth of projects that they've been working on, and I move to the reappointment.
Move, Mr. Ma'am.
Moving second, any discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine? Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, um, DDRC. Um, you got someone, Dan?
I have really been trying to find somebody.
It's not, it's not, it's not easy to find an architectural historian.
It is not, and we're very limited. I did reach out to Scott Garvin and several other folks who have done a lot of projects in town and asked them if they could try to help, um, and they're trying to help us find somebody, but I have struggled, that is a very hard position to find.
How about we, how about we do this, uh, is Chris still here? Chris, Chris, Missy, would we talk to Amy? I know we were trying again, uh, this is probably, I think, all the different positions we've, uh, I think we've had more challenges with this one, uh, than anyone else. Can you guys maybe give Daniel some good options, uh, that might not reside in District Four? This is some, some really good people, uh, and, and we'll just have to defer to that recommendation, someone who, who meets the criteria, and we'll take that up at the next meeting, all right? Let's see if we get someone, uh, applying, Ashley will, will open up the architecture historian for another couple of weeks. You guys give Mr. Rickman some recommendations, people is comfortable with someone, and we'll bring it back up, uh, again, it may not be District Four, but someone that, um, we could get about, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, is that, that was the only one for, uh, DDRC, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so we're gonna, uh, architectural historian, to make, uh, Daniel agreed, all questions are answered on the ACE Committee, you wanna make a motion?
I would move approval, um, what do you need me to say, Ben? I, I had said, I move approval of Todd Shaw, Dylan Gunnell, Darius Jones, Tara McRaven, Tyson Lusk, Tanya Hatton, Jeff March, Brent LaFever, and C N Rivera, the Advisory Committee on Equality.
Mr. Duval, you want a second there?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Uh.
Mr. McDowell?
Yeah.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Uh, next we have the food policy committee.
All right, so, what we're gonna do here, y'all, we've been waiting on a lot of folks here, so we have eleven?
Yes, we have eleven vacancies.
Lots, the, uh, current committee has, because we, we took four, three of them last time?
You took for two reappointments of Tracy Dixon and, um, Ashley Page. And those eleven vacancies are outside of their reappointments. And then the committee has also provided recommendations as well.
How many do you have here? Nineteen, nineteen?
Yeah, nineteen applicants.
Nineteen for eleven slots. A lot of really good people, uh, with some incredibly relevant experience.
I think we should not take persons outside the city limits, because we've got plenty of inside the city limits.
What is that, um? Got some good applicants from outside, uh, that's your direct neighbor district sometimes. So that gets us closer.
I think you certainly ought to appoint the person whose name is Yumi, through the Food Service Committee.
I think, one applicant who, uh, shows up is four, but I think that's a far safer's address. I, I would, um, I, I, I know very few of these individuals personally. Um, I would say, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and lift up a few, uh, just because of their relevant experience, I think we should take a, a, a serious look at. And that's a Mr. King, uh, who's the diabetes-free, um, South Carolina coordinator at Blue Cross Blue Shield. Certainly would be an asset, um, uh, the, uh, District Four, uh, well, that's actually outside the city limits too, but the business is in District Four. You have, um, food bank, uh, employees, and there's a food bank, have a mission. Help me out here.
Um, Ome.
Public health PhD student, and this is Mr. Drager.
Uh, Mr. Espinizo.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mister.
Guillermo Espinizo.
I, I can't, I can't hear you, well, I'm sorry.
Guillermo Espinizo, uh, not in the, uh, I guess any district, but you know, with these donut holes, Mr. Mayor could be very close to a district. Um, Senior Planner Development Director, Central Midlands Council of Governments, I think that's a good fit.
I'd say, um, Ome Salma, uh, never figure her last name.
Ome, yeah.
Yeah, Ome with food, food chair.
Uh, absolutely, Director Policy and Advocacy, and obviously, and, and, uh, Ashley, the, would you, would you help, uh, lift up the, the, the names of the recommendations from the committee as well, real quick?
Uh, yes, Jabari Broderick, Roger Duggar, Lauren Ekstrom, Guillermo Espinoza, Regina Greer, Quinn Hayes, Jennifer Lobel-Kahn, Zach King, Tyler McDonald, Ome Salma, Yumi Weathersby. Those are recommendations.
How many were they? Fourteen? How many recommendations?
That's eleven.
That's the.
I think they're recommending.
Now, now, mind you, those recommendations are without regard to geography, so, uh, 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 these folks have been grinding, you remember how much we went through this to get this established? They've been working hard, I trust their judgment, uh, 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 I move acceptance of the recommendations from the committee.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk, I'm sorry, Mr. Rickman, I apologize.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add, I think if we could at some point try to find a specific position, maybe with somebody with some HUD experience, because I know that we have the ability to leverage loans to help build grocery stores, Houston and several other cities have used this to combat, um, food deserts, and so we ought to try to make sure we can find somebody who has, uh, thing, and it may be a staff person that we want to have join it and, and look, but I think we ought to try to have every option available to the committee as they try to move forward and help us, um, deal with the, um, issues at hand.
Let's make, uh, let's maybe make that, um, very specific directive to them, that we want them to take a look at, at, at these opportunities. All right, any of the comments, if none, move the previous question, Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell? Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Uh.
Mayor Benjamin?
Right. Penny, 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 Penny. All right.
So they have two vacancies, um, and three applicants, but the first applicant, um, well, I talked with the chair, the director of transportation penny oversight, and we discussed, um, the applicants, but I think they recommended, um, the first after some discretion.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, a recommendation that came forth concerning the applicants for the transportation penny oversight was the first name on your list when discussing the applicants with, um, I think.
On a car.
Mm-hmm.
We've got two inside the city limits. Two were formed, um.
You know, and there's been a whole lot of changes and machinations and, uh, legal issues and everything else, uh, I, I wouldn't mind if, 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 if we could hold off on this for one meeting, open up, uh, we, you know, we got, we got one good person there in, in Lee Mashburn now, we need, we need someone more folks likely, quite frankly, who understand business, understand consulting, construction rather, and, um, uh, can advocate. I'd, I'd love to get some folks to some focus on, on, on multi-modal transportation.
Okay.
Um, uh, obviously, many of you remember when the, when the penny was conceived, there's a whole lot more walk, bike in there, uh, uh, that, that didn't, uh, seem to, to make it to the end of the, uh, of the day, post referendum. I would love to have someone there on the committee who can advocate for the city's position on, on those issues, and maybe if we could all come up with a few names, uh, for the next meeting, uh, to, to submit a little bit, and, and, and some of these folks may actually fit that, fit that bill.
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, I don't, I don't know that, um, not clear. So let's plan to open back up?
Yes.
And have it on the next council meeting, so much up at seven days, ten days, whatever the, the limit is, but we're planning to act on them, um, close case.
Okay, thank you.
Did you make your job easy today?
Yes.
All right. Good day.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Listen here.
Moving into a period of city council committee referrals and reports, um, I would like to take up, Mr. Mayor, when you all finish the November meeting schedule.
Okay, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, all right, Mr. No.
I'm going to prefer Mr. Mayor to administrative committee.
The, the discussion regarding the prospective appointment of a chief health officer, all right? All right, uh, second, the motion sent to committee, any discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk, call her on.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi, thank you, um, uh, any other reports or referrals, Mr. Duval?
Mr. Mayor, I want to inform the, uh, council that, uh, Butlerillo was asked if we look at reconstituting the Memorial Park, um, committee. It was formed, I think, about thirty years ago, but never has had a structure to it, and the members of the committee, some of them are now deceased, and he wants to re, reinvigorate the committee and get it properly functioning, and the legal staff is working on it, uh, right now.
Okay, awesome, awesome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr..
I have a question for you.
Please.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
You know, a lot of the topics we've talked about today would benefit the leverage of federal, state, nonprofit funding that's out there floating around. Can you give us a quick update on where we are with our full-time grant writer position, uh, that, that we can maybe take some action on pursuing, uh, these funding outlets? Can you give us a quick update on where we are with our full-time grant writer position, uh, that, that we can maybe take some action on pursuing, uh, these funding outlets?
Yes, sir, um, well, we haven't posted, we were not seeing the breadth of applicants, applicants, but maybe not the breadth of what we were looking for, so we reposted it. I do think, um, we're at a point now to take and have interviews, so it is moving forward.
Wonderful.
Yes, sir, and I would say though that, um, you know, it, we absolutely, I, I think I brought the first grant, professional grant writer to the city many years ago, and the, to have, uh, her has been to our benefit. We lost her, uh, to the university unfortunately, but we still partner with her a lot. So we have, I think even at your suggestion, Mr. Brennan, reached out to her to, you know, help us look for some good applicants. But I will say too, uh, notwithstanding that, because we have to get that person hired, we're also utilizing it within the different departments, particularly, um, with Parks and Recreation, ACM Simon's hired, um, a grant writer specific for the Parks and Recreation efforts with the foundation, and that is proving to be really successful. So we're trying to, and, um, you know, certain departments, definitely police and fire, they're always applying for grants as well, so we're working on that.
Wonderful.
Post haste.
We'll get, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other referrals, uh, uh, or reports? Seeing on, um, have you signed up or, and you want to sign up online?
Um, we have an individual who signed up, um, upon arriving to the meeting, Ms. Glover, she's here in the room, but there are no callers on the line in the speakers queue.
So we do have someone who's in the room or is not in the room? Signed up, signed up here but is not in the room, okay?
Ms. Glover's here and she would like to speak.
Oh, Ms. Ovita, okay.
Thank you.
Sweet, I, I've never, you're, you're always sweet. I've never heard to be short.
Thank you very much, my mayor.
You know, we love you.
Here's a theme for you for next year. Since sitting here, I said, I came up with this, and it's the city of the first, so think about that when you go. But I want to say greetings, um, council. Those of you that don't know me, I am Ovita Glover, and I'm wearing three masks. And I brought one right there, but I need to get it if I can. So, the first mask that I'm wearing today, and I want to say I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Uh, I'm not fussing, these are day, this is a day of thank yous. I am representing the family, this is the color, neutral color, and friends and foes, saying thank you for the, taking the unprecedented stance and making the decisions to mandate mask wearing in our schools, in the effort to save our youth, our future. To the Attorney General, sit down somewhere. Council, continue to stand for your rights. Right, R I G H T. Being responsible, making intelligent decisions, governing for a healthy tomorrow, meaning save our youth and communities. Mask two, as I change it, I represent Funds Incorporated, the organization that sponsors the annual statewide Black History Parade and Festival, which is an effort to educate our communities about our history. The City of Columbia, parks and populations have assisted with this effort for many years, since two thousand and four. And we want a council to hear and see us say thank you. Thank you for your continuous support, and we shall see you in February. Mask three. I stand as president, representing the Columbia branch in double A C P, to inform you that the membership of the branch wholeheartedly stand with the city, council, and Richmond County. Mask mandate, let the records reflect that we have your backs. We are demanding the governor McMaster make mask ban be lifted, and that he does the efforts of saving lives of our youth and our communities by replacing the mask mandate. We are encouraging everyone to continue to wear masks and get vaccinated. To the community, save our lives by saving your life. In February, the Columbia branch in double A C P, we launched a housing navigator program, an effort to guide or assist those community members that are facing the evictions from their homes. People, we have people that are going to be put out, that have been in their homes all their lives. We are there to help navigate them through a system. The system that we project, as they call in, we will take information on that person. We have partnered with over forty lawyers, South Carolina Appleseed, and some other entities with monies to, that people can receive. We encourage those of you that are hearing my voice at this time, to please tell anyone that may be facing eviction, that you that they have a person that can assist them, an organization, and what we will do is, is navigate them. We stay there. If you call in, if you crying, we have that customer service ready for you, just to calm you down and get you where you need to go as well. To this date, we have been able to guide and assist over a hundred and twenty families since February. Council, you stepped up with support for this effort. Again, we say thank you. I, on the other hand, would like to say, a lot of people say, where is the N double A C P? My last statement at this point, Columbia branch is a quiet storm. When you look up, we up on it, doggone it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Glover, always, um, full of energy, with a smile, doing the right thing. I knew you had no choice. You come from a, a, a line of civil rights leaders, uh, Reverend Glover to Reverend Wright, and, and you've been doing this since, since you were in elementary school. And, and we, we thank you for your continued leadership. Thank you so much, so much. Um, Madam Kirk, no one else to sign up this week? Alright, uh, Mr. Duval, you got a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Um, I apologize. Yes, Mr. De.
Just an announcement before we go into executive session. Um, this coming Saturday from twelve until three, uh, I've issued a challenge to county, county council person Derek Q to stuff the bus, school supplies. I've already declared that the city is gonna win this. Amen.
Amen.
We gonna win this. Thank you, thank you, Brother Strom. Um, twelve to three o'clock, Page Ellington Park, please come out and show your support, not only for this effort, but primarily for our children. We've already designated the schools that these gifts are going to be given to. Uh, we have computers that, that have been given to us, so please, twelve to three, Page Ellington Park. We have a bus that is so designated city and county, with the city, we may have to bring in another bus for the. So please, please, give us your support. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely, uh, thank you, Mr. McDowell. I got two Omegas doing that. You need a cap, uh, I'll for the help lead the organ, lead the whole effort? Make sure it gets done right? Patrick might volunteer, I don't know, let, let figure that, um, Mr. Mr. Duval?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
May I discuss the November meeting schedule just very briefly with you all?
Yes.
Um, as rightfully, I think, and appropriately advised by our clerk, we are anticipating that there will possibly be a runoff election on November sixteenth, and you all are already scheduled to meet at two P M. on that day, so we are suggesting, or I'm suggesting, that council can set a meeting on November ninth instead. Uh, the proposed schedule would be November second, November second election day, November ninth, a council meeting and zoning public hearing at two o'clock P M. November sixteenth runoff election day, and November twenty fifth would be Thanksgiving Day.
I'm sorry, you, you, you propose, I'm sorry, say that one more time?
We're proposing that moving your November sixteenth meeting to November ninth in anticipation of November sixteenth being a runoff election.
But, okay, and November second not happening?
November second is election day.
There's some, exactly, so we're not having, okay, 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 election day. I thought we were saying we're gonna meet on election day, I apologize.
No, right now you're meeting on a, what we, what we think will probably be a, a, a runoff.
Okay.
Election on that day.
So now we're talking about meeting on the night?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine, um, we go ahead and make that, I'll make that a motion. Just a second. Alright, discussion? Move the previous question, Kirk Carl Row.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Can I go now?
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we go into executive session, receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to S E Code thirty dash four A seventy eight two, COVID nineteen, Philip Street franchise agreement, gun crime legislation, Monticello Road, uh, S E D O T payment improvement plan, uh, discussion of matters related to proposed location or expansion of services to encourage location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body pursuant to thirty dash four A seventy eight two. Um, Beer Kella and graphic, discussion of negotiations and proposed contractual arrangement pursuant to thirty dash four A seventy eight two, legislative affairs, the protections for, uh, a thousand and one Senate Street.
Just a second. Seconds, any, uh, discussion with the previous question, Kirk Carl Row?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine?